Good evening, and if I could have your attention please. Please feel free to get programs in the back. There's some information in the back. There's cookies, there's water, whatever you would like. And have a seat, because we're gonna get started. We're a couple minutes late, and we don't want to keep you any longer than necessary. We'll be done, sure we'll be done by nine, if not by sooner, okay? How many questions do you have? So, this is the, this is actually an official meeting, so I'd like to call the order, the Council Neighborhood Committee Neighborhood Meeting of the Moffitt-Wisman Road Neighborhood Area, loosely determined, even though there's bigger area. So, call the meeting to order, and we have our other council members. Councilmember McAllister-
Here.
And Councilmember Abicoga, and I am the Chair of the Committee, Jack Segal, also a council member. So, anyway, thanks again for coming on this beautiful Mountain View evening. I think when I left my house it was eighty-five degrees, so, but it's not too bad in here. There's no air conditioning, but the breeze is coming through. So let me quickly go over the purpose of this meeting. We have neighborhoods throughout the city, and every two years, we try to get back to every neighborhood in the city, and try to tell you a little bit about what's going on in the city. We want to hear from you, what you like, what you don't like, what you, where you want from the city, and so on. And we do this, and what we're doing good, and what we're not doing well, we're here to hear that, we're here to listen to that. So, we, what we do though, there are cards on your seat, if you noticed, and they're for questions. So if you fill out your question, and you turn it in to my right, we have our very esteemed staff here that represents all of the city. We're gonna give you real-time answers to any question that you ask, assuming we can. We're certainly gonna try. This entire meeting will be, notes will be taken, all the questions, and if you put your name down, you will get a copy of what happened at the meeting tonight. Questions, and the answers, and so on, so we'll make sure that you get that. There's also a list of the staff members in the back, and a list of phone numbers in the city, in case you want to get ahold of somebody. So get those cards in as soon as you can. We have people that are gonna be picking them up. Just hold them up, and somebody will come to get it from you, and we'll go from there. A couple of other things let me mention, before we get started here. We're also gonna have CERT presentation. We classically do, and it's, we're gonna tell you about CERT a little bit. Not long, but a few more, a few minutes of it, and it usually has a very high interest with what's going on. There's also a card in the back of the room for suggestions about how to conduct, or what to have at this meeting, because we're always looking to improve it, and it's interesting. We go to different neighborhoods, and people are interested in different subjects, or so we try to listen, and we really do try to, you know, make it what you want. So, let me make a couple of quick introductions of people that I see here. I see EPC member Lisa Maticek. Lisa, hold up your hand. Right here. I see, I think, still current neighborhood, Brett Chair Kelly Ketchmar. So, I see past EPC member, Mr., Bob Leinhardt, Bob Leinhardt, hi. Long Day, Long Day, Bob Leinhardt. And, let's see who else I see. Human Relations Member, where is he?
Frank.
Oh, two of us.
Three of them, yeah.
Where's the other one?
Yeah, Frank Colletto, Jamil Shade, and Lucas Ramirez in the back. Lucas, hold your hand up. We have those from our Human Relations Commission. I don't know if I missed anybody. Did I miss anybody if I did? Yeah, oh, sorry. We have VPAC in the back, Mr. England, Bruce England, so, and-
Neighborhood Association for Northwest County, Dusty Dondi, and Sixth Park.
Great, great. Downtown Committee, where is that? Downtown Committee. Okay. So, anybody else we have? No more, anybody else? Did I miss any, any other neighborhood people that are here, as far as chairs, or working directors, or anything?
I'm the President of the Slater Neighborhood Association over, across Middlefield.
Okay, good. Who else? Oh, yeah, Steve, where's Steve? Raise your hand, Steve.
It's Steve?
Oh, there you are. Okay, Steve Nelson from the Mountain View-Wisman School District. Sorry.
Nope, Mountain View-Wisman School District, Elementary District.
Okay, President of the Tyrell Town Homes Association here. So we're pretty well represented. If I missed somebody, apologize, so. So anyway, with that, I think what we're gonna start with is our City Manager is, what we normally do is to talk about, you have handouts back there. We sort of decided amongst ourselves, there's a lot going on in the city right now, as you all know, and we have a list, and rather than read them to you, you can read them yourselves, and you can ask questions about them during the presentation. We will try to use Robert's Rules of Order here, so we won't, please don't speak out. If you, if something happens, whatever we need, you have to speak, raise your hand, try to get to you. And one more thing I'll mention, if you look to your right against the wall, there's a chart here, and that shows the development around the city that's going on. And each little dot is a new type of development, whether it's private, or public, or whatever it might be. So you might want to have a look at that at some point afterwards. So with that, I think we're gonna start in, for the City Manager. This is Dan Rich, our City Manager. Thank you, Councilmember Segal. So you have this blue sheet which has names of key staff numbers. I want to introduce everyone, so you can put a name and a face together. So I've been City Manager for Mountain View for just about two years now. As Councilmember Segal said, we rotate these meetings and get back to each area about every two years. So I'm just finishing up my first cycle, so it's my first one in this neighborhood, which is a pleasure to be here. I have to admit, I've never been on this campus before, other than the lack of air conditioning, it's lovely. We apologize for that. Anyway, let me introduce the folks who are here tonight, so you can see them. From my department, in our Community Outreach Program, we have Long Test Cinco in the back, joined with by Natasha Drostova and Irene Lee. So please visit their booth after the meeting, there's all sorts of multilingual information, outreach information. As introduced earlier, Bruce England from our Bike and Pedestrian Committee, Doctor of Well and Information on Bikehead Issues. From the City Attorney's Office, we have the Assistant City Attorney Lynn Dobson. Will you guys stand up, so folks can see you? They're very shy staff, you don't really see them. Our Co-Enforcement Officer Kelly Casal. Community Development Department Director Randy Suda. And Senior Planner Scott Plumbak, also who helped organize the meeting tonight. Senior Planner Regina Adams, in the middle of the room. And brand new to the city, our Housing Program Manager Vera Gill. Her first new meeting. We have several, several new staff here tonight, so be extra nice to us, please. Another planner, two other planners, and I think they're in the back of the room, Noah Downing and Lindsay Hagan, hiding back there. And Joanne Francis, who helped organize tonight's meeting as well. We'll be picking up your cards as we go around. And Community Services Department, that's Parks and Recreation essentially. We have our Director JP Guille Montaigne. And Fire, we're represented by the Chief Brad Wardle. And also Lynn Brown will be talking to you in a few minutes about the CERT program. And from Police, we have Captain Max Placel. And we've got a big contingent from Public Works, led by our Director Mike Fuller. Assistant Director Jacqueline Solomon. Our Traffic Engineer Saif Fakhri. He always gets a lot of questions at these meetings. Brand new to the city, a week, two weeks now, I think, Lisa Au, Civil Engineer. And literally just started today, stolen from my previous city. We have Ed Orenko, Principal Civil Engineer. And we also have our Solid Waste Program Manager Lori Topley. Tonight we have two other guests here that we wanted to introduce from the Environmental Protection Agency, the federal government, obviously not the city staff, but we know there are fairly environmental issues in this area, so they very graciously joined us. In the back of the room, we have Alaina Lee and Penny Ray. So if you have questions about the environmental issues, I'm here to help answer those. Before I turn it back to Councilmember Segal, let me just mention a few kind of city-wide issues, and then the council members will talk about some more specific things. First and foremost, near and dear to my heart, the city's budget, that's one of my major responsibilities. We just adopted the budget two weeks ago, on the eighteenth, after several public meetings on it. Pleased to report, for the first time in five years, we adopted a budget that did not require any cuts to be balanced this year. So it's a good sign that the economy is finally coming back for us. Total budget is over $200 million, but the general fund, which is kind of the day-to-day operations, is $98 million. And we expect, at the end of the year, if everything goes according to plan, we'll end up with almost $2 million in reserves or surplus at the end of the year. The other thing I wanted to mention, Councilmember Segal mentioned the map over there. Last year, after a four-year process that involved more than eighty public meetings and at least 500 or more residents participating in our general plan update, Lisa Maticek, the Councilmember McAllister, when they were on the Planning Commission, spent probably thousands of hours, literally, on it. So that was adopted by the City Council last July. It's really the vision for the city, the city's development for the next 20 years. And there are five specific areas where the change is concentrated, and those are outlined in that map up there. Now, the next step of the process, that's really, literally, just a plan, a piece of paper that sits on the shelf. It's not kind of law that changes things. So the next step is what we call precise plans, and each of those change areas will have a precise plan developed, which is the nitty-gritty details of what happens in that area. The three of those are underway right now for North Bay Shore, San Antonio, and El Camino. That's about a two-year process to update that entire thing. Now, last thing I just wanted to mention briefly, is, city's in the process of updating our website. It hasn't been done in six or seven years. It's definitely out of date, we know that. We're working very hard on it right now. We have a Council Technology Committee that's gotten some sneak peeks at it. We hope to have a beta site available to the public in early fall to get input from residents, and then launch it officially and formally later this year, so please stay tuned for that. We're also very significantly more in social media, so we encourage you to like us, even if you don't like us, like us, on Facebook and Twitter. It's really a great way, particularly from the Police and Fire Departments, to get literally up-to-the-minute information on what's going on in town, including where they're gonna be ticketing, so where you should avoid or drive extra carefully that day. With that, I'll turn the back over to Councilmember Segal. Thank you, Dan, thank you very much. Couple of things I wanted to mention again, or make sure you understand. Normally at this time, the council members would go over what we call an update, and we would tell you about different things going on in the city. So, like I say, they're all in the back there. If you have questions about them, write your question down, and we will answer your question. We'll make sure we get your questions answered. We decided not to take the time to do that tonight, since there's so many, and you can read it yourself. It's a pretty good explanation of what's going on. One other thing I wanted to mention, or a couple others, so, I'm gonna talk to you about the City Council major goals that we, the City Council, have adopted for the year 2013, 14, and 2014, and 15. And you may be surprised, I don't know, so. Number one on the list was to retain and improve green space and canopy. Our tree canopy, we think is extremely important, our green spaces, our open space, and so it's a very high priority for the council, for every project we look at, to try to save our trees and the open space around where, whatever it may be. Another one, the second one, was to improve bicycle and pedestrian mobility throughout the city. And we're doing that, and there's a lot of work going on in that area to make pedestrians crossing and walks much more safe, and allow bicycles to use our city much more safely. So it's a high priority, and we do try to put that way up there. And last thing, as our City Manager alluded to, was use technology to enhance customer service efficiency, and advance the admission of the organization. We live in the heart of Silicon Valley. It isn't that you have to use it. Some people like computers, like to do, get online, and so on, and others don't. But it's sure gonna be there, if you want to use it, and it'll be easy to use and readily available. So with that, the meeting, we're gonna go ahead and start the main part of the meeting, which is to answer your questions. And the way we'll do this is that I'm gonna turn it over to staff, they'll have your question, they'll read your question, and then give you an answer. Now what we'll do, depending upon how many questions we have, someone asked me how long we're gonna be here tonight. I said, "Pencil, how many questions do you have?" So at the end of the meeting, rather than answer questions via the written ones, if you want to raise your hand, we'll take a question and try to answer it without a discussion. If we do a long discussion, then one person could take up the entire time. So we will try to be fairly strict about that. So with that, I think we're ready for the, did I miss anything? Let me ask my councilmembers. I think I'm okay. Which one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. We forgot CERT. Lynn? So Lynn Brown from the Fire Department is gonna talk to us about CERT.
Thank you, Councilmember Segal. Hi, my name's Lynn Brown, I work in the Fire Department. I am the Office of Emergency Services, and it's, my job is to be sure the city's ready for whatever bad thing might happen, whether it's a fire, or flood, or earthquake, or terrorist attack, all those fun things. My job is to be sure the employees, the residents, the businesses, the schools, everybody here is ready for whatever bad thing might happen. I'd like tonight just to give you a quick infomercial. We have a great program called CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. Any CERT grads? I know I saw a few. Good deal, good deal. It's great to see. So CERT is a program, it's about a $20 program, and we teach you some basic skills when help's not coming. We generally have a pretty good, if you call 911 now, you can expect police, fire, and ambulance very quickly. In large-scale disaster, you can't expect that level of service, so it's important to know how to take care of yourself. So we offer CERT, and we teach you eight basic modules, and we teach you some basic preparedness, how to be prepared, what kind of supplies to have, where to store them, things like that. We do a module on fire safety and fire suppression, how to put out a fire, and more importantly, when not to put out a fire. A big part of CERT is personal safety, being sure you don't add to the problem by becoming injured or, you know, something happening to you during a disaster. We do two modules of disaster medical operations, and most of it's had first aid, and a lot of first aid is what to do until the ambulance gets there. And in disaster medical operations, we teach you what to do when the ambulance isn't coming. So very basic things that help save people's lives. We teach a module on team organization, how to organize a team, using a system called the Incident Command System, which is the way to manage people. The Fire Department throughout the country uses that. We do one on search and rescue, how to search a building, how to size it up, and again, when not to search a building, if it's too dangerous to go into that building, we teach you that. We do one on disaster psychology, the way people might react and feel both victims and rescuers following a large-scale emergency. And then finally, CERT in terrorism, and we talk about weapons of mass destruction, potential targets, things like that here in Mountain View. And then kind of the capstone of the class, we call it Field Day. The last day of the class, you go out to fire station before, it's a training station, and you actually put out a fire. You search a building, you work in the command post, and you treat simulated medical victims. So it's a pretty good, I think, hopefully if you talk to the folks that took the course, those two, it's a pretty good course, and it's a valuable study you can definitely help out with. And you know, if you think about 100 years ago, we didn't have 911. If your house caught on fire, your neighbors came over, you made a bucket brigade, you put the fire out. And if you couldn't, your neighbors came out of barn raising and helped you rebuild it. So that's part of what CERT does, it's called Build Community, and helps people be better prepared. Again, our next class starts in September, hopefully September 12. We have a Thursday evening class. I have some brochures on the back table there, and I'll be around after if you'd like to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn. I know a number of us on the council have taken the CERT course, and I know, I'll tell you right now, it is great. I really recommend it. You learn a lot, so it's well worth doing. So with that, who's our first volunteer over here with questions? Who we have over here? So Randy Suda?
Good evening. The first question I have, actually I'd like, if someone would acknowledge the question, I'd like a clarification. The question reads, "Could the city set up a meeting with landowners on the other side of Highway 85?" Is that yours?
Yes, and actually, I have a couple questions for you, divided by 85. I would like to know here, how, how many people represent the 85 that come to the city?
Represent the other side of 85?
Other side of 85. So we're talking about Charabella, Shoreline, Middlefield, and 85, basically. So we do have some, and these are probably homeowners or any of those.
Homeowners.
Yeah. So this is good. Things up by there, nothing is happening because of the way the light industrial system is, it's home, and it's huge potential for everyone, that's for these folks to have more access at home. But nothing is happening there. You get a group together in that area, and you're meeting all the people, the light, the light industrial and heavy industrial. We have a property on San Leander, just down in the harbor. And the nine-tens of nature, I don't know what any of that's gonna come and affect the neighborhood.
These days not a lot.
All right, so that whole area is a problem, and I know during your, you know, working on the problem and all that, nothing really exists there. For me not saying it behind you, it's weird, and I'm not coming, saying, waving the flag during that, and we need something going there. The pencil there is just crazy, all the way up.
So it sounds like what you may be asking for, is a meeting that would be focused upon that particular, that particular area.
In that area, so we can meet together, people who own it, they're homeowners, they own it, they don't own it, and I don't own it.
I think that's something that the Council Neighborhood Committee could take up and consider as a future meeting, is to have one for that particular, that sub-area. I think there might be some interest in doing that.
One of the things there, Mountain View, say, Mountain View, I'm losing so much, I can't do any more property, I'm being sold, you know, you're not gonna get no package. There are buildings there, and nobody really wants, you know, you guys, Mountain View, losing so much money in that area, really, you can't be doing.
Well, thank you for pointing that out, and certainly, I think the council will take that into consideration. Thank you. The next question, "As residents would like to see mixed use in proposed housing developments with coffee shops, restaurants, bakeries, et cetera, on the ground floor, why has no such development been approved? What blocks developers from including, including small businesses in the new design?" So our new general plan does allow mixed use as a matter of right in any new project along our major corridors. It doesn't mandate it, but it does allow that, which is a significant upgrade and change from our previous zoning ordinance. We do have a couple projects along El Camino that are proposing mixed use. One is, let's see, what's that? Well, one's at Castro and El Camino, but the other's on the hotel side. I forgot the name of the hotel, though. Pacific Inn, thank you. So we have two mixed-use projects that are currently going through the process. One piece of input, if you do see a project being proposed, and there is neighborhood support for a mixed-use project, that's certainly input that staff in the City Council would like to hear as the project gets going.
I argue that for stuff along the light rail corridor, it's some of the western moved up and stuff out from nowhere.
So the, there is an office project that just started the process, the Reef Project in Middlefield 237, where they are proposing some retail along the, on the Middlefield frontage, which is fairly close to the light rail corridor. So that will be going through the process here, probably starting here the next few Certainly, I think, input for the council, and that's something they think we can all take into account as the proposals come through. Next question is, "Some cities take issue with ABAG's housing targets. Does Mountain View agree with ABAG's numbers?"
Remember, everybody's in place.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's an interesting philosophical discussion on this one. At this point, we haven't taken a strong issue with ABAG's numbers. We have disagreed with some of their allocations, i.e., which is to say where they are allocating housing within our community, but the overall numbers do not, do not create a change to our zoning structure, and don't create a change to our general plan. Either this round nor the previous rounds have required that. Now, what you've certainly seen in the newspapers is some of the Association of Area Governments' allocations do require a change in other cities, and I think that is where the rub comes with those particular cities, and that's why you'll see other cities strongly opposing those housing allocations. Here in Mountain View, the numbers we have received aren't requiring a change to our zoning standards.
Randy, I can make a comment on that one? I think this is gonna work, I'm not sure. ABAG is Association of Area Governments, for those of you that don't know what it is, and it's a state organization. And what they do, they send us requirements on how much housing, and what type of housing, middle-level, high, so on, the overall rate that we should zone for in our city. They don't require us to build it, let me say that at the beginning. So that's a big misunderstanding that I'd like to sort of clear up. In other words, when we do the general plan, we met the numbers that ABAG had required us, but there's not this is, that will ever get built, or that by law we have to build it. That's up to private developers and a general market to see what happens. So that's, permission, right?
So I recently attended, on behalf of Mountain View, a meeting that our Assembly Member Rich Gordon, who represents this area, had about the housing allocations, and it was an interesting meeting. It was, most of the cities I found, other than Sunnydale, Mountain View, a couple of us are smaller towns, like Atherton, Fort Saba Valley, and Little Park, and no one was happy with their numbers, and, and so he, the Assembly Member is trying to see if there are some other ways to come up with these allocation numbers. Frankly, it's challenging when you have, you know, small towns, that normally people will hide and say that their numbers are too big too, but if you do have input, I mean, I'm happy, I would love to hear it, and I'm sure the Assembly Member too would appreciate some comments, because it is a state, as Jack mentioned, it is a state organization or agency, so it would be, it would take the legislature to make some changes. And there is interest in the state legislature to do something, the question is, what do we do?
And then, the next card that I have states, "Google buses up and down Wisman all day, parking on Wisman, still happening even with contacting Google." We do meet regularly with representatives of Google. We've heard this complaint. I know that various departments have contacted them, and we will certainly reiterate this concern, this problem, and, and again, communicate the neighborhood's concern about them utilizing Wisman for access, and certainly parking on Wisman.
I, one of your residents, did contact me. I went out there one morning to observe the buses out there and see what there was. So if you capped and we observed and kind of filmed what was happening up there. If you know certain times, certain places that these buses congregate, let us know, or let me know, or any of the other council members. I'll be glad to go out there at that hour, at that time, to observe it, to see it, so that way, when I talk, we have direct communication with Google, we can talk to them and say, "This is what we saw." My car is a great bit of weight, and we say, "You saw it." And they are very responsive to trying to resolve the issue, because they want to be good news. I see how you're saying it, but if you see it, please let us know. I'll be coming out. I've done it once before, and I'll be glad to see it again. And you gotta get it resolved, because we're gonna, as a city expands with all the transportation and traffic, shuttles are gonna be a part of our city, and we want to get them to work and minimize their impact on our city's social conscience.
Good evening, I'm Max Placel, I'm one of your police captains. I'm representing your Police Chief Scott Ramire tonight, he's out of town. And I have a few questions that I'll address, and first is, can an 18-wheeler vehicle be parked in a residential area? Generally not. There is provisions for gross vehicle weight. I can have a Community Services Officer respond out. This one says it's on Linwood. If you have that problem in your neighborhood, you can always contact the Police Department through our non-emergency line, or you can even file a report online, and we can send some folks out to assess the situation, whether this vehicle is legally parked. or you can even file a report online, and we can send some folks out to assess the situation, whether this vehicle is legally parked or not. The next question involves, uh, private property, does a city have jurisdiction over condominium complexes, such as parking complaints and, one instance, fire lanes? Fire lanes, yes, we can enforce, generally, if it's properly posted, we can enforce on private property fire lane violations. However, general parking violations on private property, we cannot. A private owner's group or private property owner can tow from the property if it's properly posted and in compliance with the vehicle code. And if you have questions about that, you can find that online, or you can call the police department, and we'd be happy to direct you to the appropriate source to have you post the proper signage. Could the police, uh, address the barking dog ordinance in Mountain View? Sitting in one's home, trying to sleep, yes, I have a neighbor with one. So, uh, ten minutes continuously, or intermittently over thirty minutes of barking. And again, if you contact us, if you call us, we'll send usually a community services officer, if they're available, or a police officer out, and they can monitor the, uh, the dog and see if the dog's in violation. You can also contact your neighbor if you're comfortable, or, or have a relationship in which they may want to cooperate with you. If not, sometimes that occurs, then we can try to mediate and communicate with them to let them know that it's a neighborhood issue. And if the dog is barking, we typically will warn, and if it's a repetitive problem, we can issue administrative citations, which could impose a fine, and we try to resolve it through mediation generally. So, if it is a problem, when it's barking, please call us, and we'll be happy to send somebody else. Had a question regarding mail theft, and, uh, there is a, an increase in theft in the city of Mountain View as it is in other jurisdictions surrounding us. You've probably read some of those reports in local newspapers, those stories. We have had mail thefts in this area. Uh, it's not, uh, a prolific problem in which it's occurring every day, but it has been occurring on a regularity that we keep an eye out. I would certainly suggest that there's, especially if you receive, uh, checks or financial information, what they, what the thieves typically try to do is utilize the information from the mail, and then, identity theft or fraud with that information. So, if you're receiving that type of information in the mail, you may want to consider a post office box, or looking at a mailbox that is secure via a lock, although sometimes they try to defeat that as well. Especially if you're in a larger complex, we've had instances in which the large, um, outside mailboxes, in which there might be ten or twenty blocked mailboxes, get, gets broken into from behind, and then the mail gets stolen out of there. So, if you have an older mailbox, it might be time to look and see if you want to have the additional security and replace that. So those are some options there. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Max. So normally, I get to allocate all the questions to other people, I don't have to say anything, but there are a few that didn't go anywhere else, so I got them. Actually, three questions on the same themes, I'm not gonna read them all, but they all really have to do with this school and having a neighborhood school. I'm just gonna read the first one and the other two, slightly different but the same concept. Are there plans in the near future for the city to take back the G-I-S-S-D campus? If so, when? Are there properties land that are either for sale or leased for a school in another part of the city, off a field area perhaps? So, uh, the city actually has nothing to do with the school site, or any school sites in the city, those are governed by the school board that Mr. Nelson is on. Uh, so we don't really have any say on that. I think there has been some discussions within the school district, I don't want to speak for them, but, on whether or not they would take back this campus, I believe the German school has a lease that goes for several more years. So there's really not anything directly that the city can do on that. I would encourage you to contact the school district, I know they're always looking at their boundaries, and doing the best they can to, to have the neighborhood schools for all the residents. The other question, uh, about the website, will the new website get rid of the stupid, obsolete, labor-intensive fax file system and move to the HTML and/or PDF? If not, why not? So, the short answer to that is, I don't know. Uh, I, I think so, but I'm not the technical expert, I don't know what's going on, kind of with the detail that was behind the scenes. So we'll get an answer to that and include it in the report that comes out at the end of the conclusion of the meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to JP from Community Services.
He told me to wear a blue shirt tonight. Uh, follow up on the website, so, um, as we're developing our new website, we're trying to put more and more information on the website, so, um, as the community services department, we're gonna start putting more and more information on there to make it easier for residents all the time. Also, also on the website, is the Ask Mountain View, um, link, so you can go and put a question on there at any time, don't ever wait for a meeting like this to ask questions, we'll put something on there. Uh, our staff tries to answer that within twenty-four hours. And then as a staff, we meet every Monday and go over those to make sure those are followed up on and taken care of. So the, the first question I have, it says, how can we get written official information from the city on? And there's a number of questions regarding, uh, what part of the vegetation along roadways the city will trim, what the guidelines for the trimming are, which part of the land between the sidewalk and property the city considers to belong to the city, and whether and what kind residents can trim city-owned plants? So, I will get you written information on that, I have the, the name of the person who wrote this and the address, so I can get that. But we will put that information on the website if it's not on there already. And we talk about trees and roadway landscaping and all that, so all the official information should be on there. But if you have a specific concern about something in your area, don't hesitate to get ahold of us then. And we can, uh, talk about a specific area also. The second question is my favorite stuff, and that's, uh, excuse me, is parks. And we all want more parks, and that's hopefully my job, is to get us some more parks. And you heard, uh, Councilman Siegel talk about that one of the council goals this year is to get more open space and, uh, and that, uh, and additional tree canopy, but what the council is really looking at is to get more land that's designated for parks and open space. So that's one of the things we're, we're focusing on this year. We also, the Parks and Art Commission, has been charged by the city council to update the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. And we're going through that right now, uh, I think we're scheduled to, uh, bring that back to the city council in the fall. And it's gonna, it's gonna tell us, in this area, there is not enough open space, not enough parks, based on our standards. So we are looking at that. The council has also looked at a certain couple parcels of land in this area that we're, uh, possibly designating for, uh, parks or open space. So we are looking at that. The Parks and Open Space Plan is gonna tell us that there's a lack of open space, even though there's a great park right out here, a beautiful park, and hopefully it's well maintained, I know it's well utilized. So, um, uh, we are looking at that, and, and as the council said, it's one of their priorities this year, so, thanks.
Uh, good evening, uh, I'm Said Fafi, trying to queue here. I have about fifteen, sixteen questions, so, I, I break it in two sessions. First question, need speed bumps in slade of neighborhood due to increased speeding traffic, more traffic in general? Are streets have not set up for crowded parking and speeding, et cetera? And then the same kind of questions, it's, this time, it's, uh, on easy street between Melville and eighty-five, too much speed. Uh, the city has a neighborhood traffic management program, uh, the residents can submit a petition, and we do, we go there and count traffic volume and speed. There are certain criteria, if it meets the criteria, then we will go and have a neighborhood meeting, and we kind of discuss the solutions, and we can install speed bumps, so, circle, whatever is appropriate in, in the neighborhood, that reason. So, uh, I leave my car, and you can, uh, contact me, I'll give you a petition form. Not everybody in the neighborhood has to sign a petition, but it's just a number of residents, then we can start the process. Uh, we need a white line down the middle of Cypress Point Drive to divide the traffic. Uh, generally, we put a yellow line in the middle of the road, but, uh, to, to, it's two-way traffic. Uh, on a residential street with lower volume, we do not put a line. There are studies that, if, if you define the path of travel to cars, they actually, uh, drive faster. If you don't define it in a small residential street, they will drive more carefully. So, that kind of a psychology of drivers, again, if, if, if the volume is not really in the order of two, three thousand cars a day, generally, we do not put, uh, we don't recommend putting, you know, yellow, divided in the middle of the road. Overnight parkings, motorhomes, trailers, no overnight parking signs. So, in, in areas that there are residential, commercial or light industrial streets, we have this problem. And, there are actually five neighborhoods in the city that, uh, has this problem, and two of them is in, in, in your neighborhood. We didn't stop on Clyde, overnight parking. We are also looking at installation on National Avenue. Again, if, if a trailer or RV park in a residential street, you can call the police and, and they enforce it. There's no need for a sign, but on a commercial area, they do park RVs for a long time, and then the police have to go and, uh, enforce the seventy-two hour parking. It's, it's very hard, because they move within seventy-two hours, and, and the, uh, police officer have to check it, go and mark somehow, uh, how long they're, and so it's, it's kind of a cumbersome part to enforce. So we do install no overnight parking, it's, the sign says no parking between two AM and six AM. So we have installed on Clyde, and we are looking to install at the National within a couple of months. Uh, street parking is a problem in my neighborhood, there are far too many cars, this interfere with street cleaning, trash collection, and pose a traffic hazard. Is there any chance Mountain View could adopt ordinance to limit street parking to manageable level? We have certain, uh, mechanisms to regulate parking on streets. In downtown area, we have problem with commuters, and Caltrain or BT, light vehicle commuters, they park on residential streets, so we have installed the limited hour parking, that then is applicable to everybody. We also use our neighborhood traffic management program, kind of framework for residents to submit a petition if they want to, uh, limit somehow parking, maybe on one side street only, or limit the hours. But again, it would be applicable to everybody. If you live in the neighborhood, then you have to obey the, the rules too. That, that are, those are the programs we currently have. Uh, can you update us on the city's, city's planning discussion of residential permanent parking? I live in the neighborhood behind the Adobe building, and we have, uh, a problem with commuters. We use the railroad gate and surrounding street and park. The only streets marked with five hour parking are where residents park, and we are the ones being ticketed, not the commuters. Might that be possible to use our neighborhood as a pilot for residential neighborhood permanent parking? So when we did the downtown parking study, one option was to look in future for residential permanent parking, only in downtown area, meaning, uh, south of Central Expressway. But, uh, we have a, something in the budget to look at models in other cities and the cost, and we have to go to Council Transportation Committee meeting with options. Uh, we, we will, we have in mind to study it such a way that, that it won't be only for downtown, whatever program we have could be applicable to areas outside downtown. I think once we reach at that level of the study, then we probably will have some pilot, uh, aid to implement it if, if Council Transportation Committee approves the method or the model. There are so many models for residential permanent parking, uh, the cost and enforcement is an issue, so, we have to really study it carefully, and then, uh, get some feedback from community, and we present it to Council Transportation Committee. Uh, have funds been allocated to protect the neighborhood from the ever-increasing traffic due to commercial development in the vicinity? Uh, so when commercial development or residential comes to the city, you know, process for environmental document, looking at the impacts of the project to the surrounding area, one of the major, uh, part of the environmental study is traffic impact. So we look at traffic impact carefully, and if they're on impacting the surrounding area, we, we have mitigation also. So, uh, recently, we also are looking at transportation demand management, uh, and, and areas like Wisman, maybe forming a, uh, transportation management agency where, uh, developers are tied to agreement with the city, with the land, that they can have so many cars, and they have to promote walking, bicycling, and then transit, and if they, and there's a, maybe, and there's monitoring program with it, and if they goes over a certain level, then there's a penalty. Those penalties would be, the way the transportation management agencies will work, those penalties will be used to fund some of the, the neighborhood or, of traffic improvement in the area. So that's, that's kind of in the future, but at the moment, we do look at the impacts. I think I'd stop at this time, I'll then come back.
Hello, I'm Scott Landbeck, I'm the senior planner in the planning division, community development, and I have a couple of questions here. Uh, the first one is, it would appear from the EPC action on the antenna farm site, that the only thing it takes to change a precise plan is for the developer to ask for a change. Uh, why bother with the plans if it's gonna, if we're not cities, I can stick with it. Um, so we've got a little background about the antenna farm, that the developer is requesting a change to the unit tech that's allowed there. Currently, what's allowed there is what's called row homes, and, and developers are posing, uh, single-family homes on that site. And in general, with precise plan changes, uh, changes to plans, um, there's a process you have to go through, and the council weighs the merit of the request on a case-by-case basis. Second question I have is, um, regarding the environmental impact studies. Um, I understand are done for each development, and one was done for the general plan. But do we look at the cumulative environmental impacts in particular neighborhood like North Wisman? Why are I not, this is, do we look at vehicle impacts as part of the general plan, uh, EIR? To answer that question, it's no, generally, we, for the general plan, we look at a city-wide impact. And the last, second part of that question is, are the traffic impacts that he's done throughout the school year? And the answer is typically yes, I mean, typically done, the council done throughout the school year. And then I have two questions regarding the old Denny's site in Leon. Uh, the first one is, what is the status of the old Denny's on Leon? And the second one is, who takes care of the old couches, mattresses, furniture, junk piled on the sidewalk or if you feel, who should I call? So the answer as to what is happening at the Denny's site is, the city just received an application for a hotel on that site from Albean Express, a seventy-eight roof hotel. Uh, we are in the process of redoing the plans, so we're at the very beginning of the process, and we'll be revising the plans over the next few months. And as for who to call regarding just a handy couches or mattresses anywhere in the city, more than just here, would be Coda Force Fitz. Tell you us all where to go to. Tell us all where to go to.
Email, phone, or email network?
Yes, thank you.
What is the antenna site that you refer to?
Anyone else can hear your question.
What is he referring to as the antenna site?
So what do you refer to as the antenna site, Scott?
The antenna site is a, please, a two-acre site over by the south of Wisman area. It might be easier if I point you out on the map. So it's over by the, the light rail station over here, and there's a little vacant lot over at the light rail station, the south of Wisman, right?
Hello, my name is Honey Reddy, and I work for the Environmental Protection Agency. And I have a question, what is the status of the chemicals in water on Evendale Avenue, and is it safe to drink or use the water? We had a community meeting back in March, and since then, let me back up, the contamination is related to a chemical trichloroethane that has migrated into groundwater. There are two hot spots of high concentrations in that, along Evendale. We had a community meeting back in March to discuss the contamination, and we've been working since then on a cleanup plan to address the contamination. And we plan in August to have a draft of what the cleanup will be. We're looking at two different technologies, pumping out the groundwater, extracting it, and then piping it to a treatment plant located near Fairchild and Wisman Road. We're also looking at another technology, it's called institute chemical oxidation, and it's basically injecting an oxidant into the ground that breaks up the chemical. Once we have a draft plan, we plan to meet with the residents along Evendale Avenue and put forth the plan, get your comments, get any input, and then work with you to implement the cleanup in that area. Oh, I'm sorry. So the groundwater in that area is not used for drinking water, it's not used for irrigation, it's not used for any portable uses. The steam out of your water, most of it is from HSH reservoir, some of it also comes from some reservoir systems and other deep wells in the city.
I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Fuller, I'm the Public Works Director. Can the median be closed in terms of the left-hand turn lane that exists between Evendale and Devonshire, since it's not needed, the proposed development that drove the creation was not built, so it is not needed? That's on Wisman Road, the apartment complex at, I think it was 291 Evendale, was, they had a development application in. When we put the medians in, we tried to do the right thing and put a left-hand turn pocket in the median when, where the driveway was going to be, and then development didn't proceed. It could be removed, absent a particular safety issue. We don't really plan to remove it, though. If you have a particular concern about that, and you'd like to call Public Works, we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Does Mountain View have a membership affiliation with the ICLI group? Yes, we are members of ICLI. ICLI, it was the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, and then renamed itself to ICLI Local Governments for Sustainability. I forget exactly when we joined, I think it was when we had the Environmental Sustainability Task Course, which was about '08, and now we have a Council Environmental Sustainability Committee that meets periodically, and we have a wide range of sustainability activities going on, if you're interested in following that. And what is the city of Mountain View's position on the VTA proposal to destroy El Camino as a major automotive artery? That's in reference to the bus-traffic transit project. Our city council did discuss that project in a study session a while back. Some council members did express some concerns about dedicating the length of buses, asking the VTA for some additional information. VTA is currently studying several alternatives. Some have mixed flow, or buses share the lanes with autos as they do now, some have some dedicated lanes in different portions. And they will be releasing an environmental impact report on that project. Okay, probably next year, if you're interested in that project, keep your eye out, both the VTA and, it'll come to our Mountain View Council at some point for some discussion, and feel free to participate in that discussion.
Hi, I'm Lori Topley, I'm Solid Waste Program Manager. These questions or concerns have to do with the garbage company site on Terabella, which is actually called the Mountain View Recycling Center, but Recology also uses it as a staging area for containers and deliveries within the city. So one of the concerns is about the items that are stacked higher than the fence. We are planning to have Recology move some of the materials that are stored there, so we can accept additional materials for drop-off at that center. So I will, last time I checked into the series into requirement in the industrial zoning that the materials not be stacked higher than the fence, but I understand that it can be my source. So as they move some of the materials off of that site, I'll see if we can get them to manage that. The other issue is about the trash blowing down Zandviander. I agree, this has been a constant battle for us, especially when people leave materials on the ground when we're not open. We have installed some cameras to try and discourage that kind of behavior, and also I've been asking Recology to do a weekly cleanup on the street, but I will make sure that I speak to them about that consistently. There are also some concerns about parking, which I will refer to Sayeed, talk to him about those, and when we give out the notes from the meeting, I'll make sure that we've looked at those and addressed those questions.
Good evening again. So I have a few other questions. One is a concern about people going door-to-door soliciting. Some recent burglaries may be scouted by such activity. Are there ways in which door-to-door soliciting can be prevented or in order it's passed? There is, for charity, there's certain requirements in which business folks have to have a permit to, a business license essentially, to do door-to-door solicitation. There's no specific ordinance that allows solicitation, and there are some provisions which would still allow people for free speech, political purposes, charitable organizations in some sense, to be able to do door-to-door solicitation, walk down the street publicly and go to a door. There are instances in which folks do use that as a ruse to see if somebody's home. We had a case in which a person was actually a contractor, and was also doing that as a ruse, even though he was actually a contractor, and committing burglaries, and was arrested. So my best advice would be, when there is door-to-door solicitation, please give us a call, we'll be happy to come out, we'll be happy to talk to the person, see if they're legitimate. If they're not legitimate, it certainly is a deterrent for them to know that the community's calling the police, and the police are responding. If you're interested in more of an ordinance, then that would be a matter to address with the city council, and maybe perhaps a city council mediator discussing with your council A question regarding noise ordinance, and neighbors who have loud parties going on well into the hours, is there a noise ordinance that the city can enforce? There's no specific noise ordinance. We do have a penal code section that, in some circumstances, for disturbing the peace, can be enforced. It's not a law that, just because someone has a loud stereo on, that we can go out and arrest somebody. There is amplification restrictions, if you're amplifying your music, so we do have some provisions in which we can limit that, it has to be permitted. But you do have the option of, again, giving us a call, we can contact the neighbor, we can attempt to gain compliance, and if it's a really out-of-control situation, we can address that. Sometimes there's other law violations, minors in possession of alcohol, and those parties tend to end pretty quickly once we show up.
Does that include vehicle noise?
Does that include vehicle noise? The music amplification is restricted by the vehicle code, anything more than fifty feet is a violation and can be cited.
Including no mufflers?
Including...
Like motorcycles with no mufflers?
Including motorcycles with no mufflers. Yes, if there's loud exhaust, there are, there is laws for that, yes. What's the reason behind the massive increase in burglaries and robberies in Mountain View compared to past years? What are we doing about it? Neighborhood watch. So we have had an increase in burglaries, not so much in robberies. There's some recent increase in robberies in this area, and it's stopped in recent weeks. The burglaries are on trend significantly, especially residential burglaries, and it's not just Mountain View, it's in the areas I've talked about before. There is Neighborhood Watch, we do have Neighborhood Watch program here in Mountain View. If you don't have one in your neighborhood, you can contact our Community Action and Information Unit, which is our crime prevention unit, and they can discuss how to organize Neighborhood Watch within your specific area. So our strategies are multiple. We do have patrol officers, you're in the Beat Four area, we call Beat Four, that's what the police officers, when they get assigned to Beat Four, they're patrolling this neighborhood. So we do have officers that are briefed on the crime trends in the area, and that they do focus their patrols in those areas. There is a very aggressive social media outreach effort, and in recent weeks, we have several examples of instances in which community members have called us, seen a crime in progress, in which we then responded and made arrests, and that's a very effective tool for us. The officers, when they do get crime information, even if it's a suspicious person that you see or a vehicle, and you report it, and we see it, and we're able to stop it, and in the last couple of weeks, we had a situation like that, in which a person, a burglar, was arrested from that type of a call. So I think our most effective strategy is really you all working with us and letting us know what you see unusual. We have, of the ninety-six officers, you know, in the department, we have about forty-some in patrol, so you can imagine, for you to kind of multiply our efforts to be able to see things is very effective, and that's how we generally do it. The robberies that were occurring down the road, we had some real significant leads in, and we weren't able to make an arrest, but I think maybe our poking around, they've moved them away somewhere, so, but we're keeping our eye out for that. And it's a basic, same question, what is being done to focus on increased crime, so...
I have additional ten cards. First question is about Google buses on Wisman area. I think councilmen have addressed it, and also the community department director touched on it. With the increase of business in the area, are there any plans for additional traffic When we install traffic signals, we look at volume of traffic, we look at collision history, we look at some safety issues, we look at visibility, volume of pedestrian, bicycle, everything. But we have some mechanism when we put signals, some of them we add to our capital improvement projects. For example, recently, or a year ago, we did Kritten and Shoreline Signal, and because of the volume of traffic and construction of new fire station, we approved also a signal at Alden-Chalston because of the volume of traffic by Google and pedestrian, and it was paid by Google. When development comes in the area, we also look at the development, if they impact intersections, say there's an existing intersection that's controlled by STAM, and they add volume of traffic or pedestrian cyclists, we do ask them to look at it and check if a signal is, should be constructed or installed. There are certain criteria, we look at it, again, it includes the volume of pedestrian, bicycle, cars, and history of collisions and visibility. We have to look at those things because usually the signals, we don't want to put it just arbitrarily in place, first with cost and create enforcement. It actually could create a safety issue if you put it at an appropriate location. So just the answer is, yes, we do look at signals. Please consider adding another signal light between Wisman and Easy Street, I guess it's in Meadowfield, and also Shoreline-Dove Park. Additional light would be appropriate, given that the concert congestion and limited access, speed limit along Easy-Meadelfield. Police also uses this area to speed up and down frequently. Again, as I mentioned, we do look at the signal carefully, cost upward of five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars, but again, we look at the benefit, and also this benefit of a signal carefully, and then we budget accordingly when it's needed, where it's needed. So we have installed in the last three, four years, signals, new signals. We are also in your neighborhood upgrading the signal at Wisman and Meadowfield, doesn't have protected left turn, so we are trying, and the signal is about fifty years old, so we are, we can't find any parts, so we are replacing. We're replacing the complete signal with eight fakes and protected left turn. What's being done to solve the problem congestion that comes with increased development that's planned and underway? We don't need a replay of the traffic problem to know Shoreline. Again, as we mentioned, when development comes, we look at the impacts. Again, we can't do any road widening in urban areas, we can't. So we are looking at other alternatives to really widening the roads, filling big intersections. We're looking at alternative modes of transportation, pedestrian, transit, bicycle. So those are all options, but we also look at certain improvement at certain locations to reduce congestions, and that's part of the process of approving developments. What are the plans for the railroad crossing at Castro-Moffat? So I have another three, four cards related to traffic signal at Central Expressway and Moffat. Delay for pedestrians, for cyclists, for cars. Just a little background, the signal is a very complicated signal because of presence of the railroad, rate crossing, and also the volume of pedestrian, cyclists, and the cars. The signal is controlled by Santa Clara County, because it's a county signal. There are certain plans coming soon. The owner of Caltrain is looking at improving preemption and safety. They have a federal fund, city and county work with the Pennsylvania Joint Powers Board and JPD to look at other improvements to the intersections. So there are some changes because of the rules of railroad crossing have changed, so they have to update their signals. County has some concerns about safety of railroad crossing, we have concern about delays. Want to over-promise, it will help some congestion, but probably not because of the railroad crossing. Most of the congestion on Moffat is due to the railroad crossing. We're really, all three agencies are worried more about safety and distance than congestion. County has a traffic operations center, I have visited, they have cameras, they can look pretty clearly, and this signal is one of the signals that's on their big TV, and they look at timing, we have requested timing adjustment. Then the development that comes at hundred Moffat, closing the on-ramp at Central Expressway that recently approved by council. So they will look at some improvement there, we will look at some improvement there by adding the bike lane and restriping the lane and adding exclusive right turn lane from South Moffat to West or North Central Expressway. from South Moffett to West or North Central Expressway.
What is applied if the high-speed rail is coming very fast?
Yes, that's the second part of the question. When the high-speed rail is being built? Currently, it's scheduled for, I believe it's 2029. There's a Caltrain electrification, which is scheduled for 2019. They also have some positive preemption that comes with electrification. Yeah, before the electrification. Which the positive train preemption actually helps Castro the most because now they don't have that safe technology to know which train stops or they're not confident about. So even if train stops at Castro, the gate goes down and then as it moves, the gate goes back up and down. So it's, the delay is too much. But with the positive preemption then, or control, then they know which train is stopping. So they will be more confident. It will reduce some congestions at Castro.
Let me weigh in on that one for just a second, too. For years, we have tried to work with both the federal government, the state, and different people, for example, at Ringstone, to see if we can put an underpass, an overpass. And we actually appropriated money for a study. And the study indicated that it could be done. And I know a number of us went back to Washington a number of times when there were earmarks, or when there were earmarks, trying to get money. It was a sizable amount of money, a hundred million dollars or something like this. And I think at one point, we were actually kind of close. And then comes High Speed Rail. And then, and High Speed Rail says, no, 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 that's our problem. And so High Speed Rail was pretty hot at one time, and now that's back down. And what's happening with the rules or laws or basically specifications says that if a train is going, you know, this little bit, over a hundred twenty-nine miles an hour, you have to have such grade separation. If it's below that, you can do an at-grade crossing. Can you mention the train at a hundred twenty-nine miles an hour? So anyway, I can't. Yeah, great, great, great. So it's something that we have been fighting as a city for years. The council has, the EPC has, and we've looked at it. And we're, there's so many variables and so many different agencies involved. And it's changing all the time. But I assure you, we're on top of it the best we possibly can. We actually even appropriated money and got our consultant in. And we did some conceptual drawings and possible plans. And didn't go too far because then High Speed Rail went away. But we felt that at least we were ahead of the curve. Next is electrification coming, and that's probably a funded issue that's going to be coming. And so, do you want to say something about that?
Maybe Mike can help me, or can help me. But from the VTA standpoint, we just passed our budget. And we did include, I can't remember how much, it's like two hundred thousand dollars perhaps, to look at the crossings, at great crossings in the North County area. So we recognize when Caltrain electrification coming along, we need to do something. So we are, it was in there, and then at the last minute, staff added that. So we are going to be engaging in the study at least. So at least there's something there. The building of it is really the challenge because each one is, it was sixty million dollars, I think. Jack and I started about six, seven years ago. And the price tag keeps going up, and it's just hard to find that kind of funding. But at least we are moving forward in the study to do something.
My next question is, who sets the timer at intersection? That's me. As a cyclist, I can barely cross the street before the light changes. Example is Central Avenue at Moffett, Sierra Vista, Ringstone. We would check it. By, the law changed now because of pedestrian safety and bicyclists. We have to set the minimum signal green for bicyclists to be able to cross. So we used to just look at cars and minimum green at the intersection. If there was only one car, it would be five seconds. But now, depending on the width of the street and the speed of cyclist, we have to set a longer green time. I've already received a lot of complaints from motorists. But I know the answers. An example is the new signal with the development at Fayette and San Antonio because we set it such a way that bicyclists could cross the intersection. So when the driver sees that the car went and there's another ten, twelve second, or ten seconds, they get mad. But that's the reason, because if there's a cyclist, they should be able. So we will look at those two intersections. This is also, what was the, what was, when was the last time a traffic engineer checked the timing at Central Expressway and Moffett Boulevard? As a pedestrian? Actually, I went lunch, and Sean has asked it today. But yeah, we are checking that with county. And it's just too much congestion. When the railroad crosses, the safety becomes a bigger issue. So I can see that at that intersection, when the railroad comes in the morning and the afternoon, there are points that a certain signal phase is skipped. And when it's skipped, and believe me, even the new signal that they're building, the county is really struggling, the railroad, they're building, they're not, they don't want to just put something in the field with that complicated signal. They're building a model in the county offices and checking all the phases with the railroad, how it works. And they're putting all their great minds to reduce congestion. But again, safety is really the bigger concern. Is there going to be any improvement at the signal light, Moffett Central? I live at 172 Sherrland, and when I come to turn left from Sherrland on to Wisman, it's often very difficult to see traffic on Wisman because cars parked too close to the intersection. We will look at this, and usually what we do, we prohibit parking close to the intersection to improve visibility. We're just doing some red curbs, which is effective. Can you talk more about what's being done to reduce congestion in downtown? Any chance for paid parking? We don't have a specific program to reduce congestion in downtown. We do allow, and council policy and staff are looking for all ways to improve pedestrian, bicycling, transit in downtown. We're also looking at development when they come to downtown, carefully with their traffic impact. Any chance for paid parking? We did a downtown parking study for current. And the current status with two parking laws, parking structure and parking laws, it was sufficient. But looked at future economic development, and future problem, and future solutions. And one of them could be paid parking. That study is, we have to look in future at the development and how that parking becomes a problem. At the moment, it seems that the study shows actually some of our newer parking structure was underutilized. So we installed some more parking directional sign, things like that.
Let me say a couple of words. Let me say a couple of words about that. It's something that the council has discussed a number of times. We haven't really decided on anything. So it is, it's totally up in the air. It could come to that, we don't know at this time. Right now, it's not on the table. The problem is, I think, that a lot of the parking overflows into the neighborhood, neighborhoods around the city. While people don't necessarily know that there are two large parking structures and several large parking lots in our city. So it's something we are continuously, continually looking at and will continue to review. To the point to where, you know, it's, it becomes one of those places where it's so crowded, nobody goes there anymore. So we don't want that to happen. So we are looking at that.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few questions here about, also about Moffett Boulevard. Sayid has touched upon, I think covered that intersection at Moffett and Central. A few other concerns, specifically about the proposed project that's at the corner of, at Moffett and Central Expressway. It's a project proposed by Prometheus Developments for about a hundred and ninety apartment units. Some concerns expressed about why did the city council approve the project? And then concerns about cities selling the ramp to the developer. So the project is, has not been approved at this point in time. It's still going through the review process. We do expect that it will come to, back to council sometime in the fall, probably October, November timeframe, something like that. The council did decide to close the ramp. That's from Sterling on to Central. And is retaining a large portion of that ramp area for a bicycle and pedestrian connection. That will connect from the corner of Moffett and Central through the, through that corner area and through what was the ramp on to Sterling. So they are retaining most of the, the council has indicated willingness to consider selling the excess area, the area that isn't needed for that bike and pedestrian pathway. But that's still going through the process at this point in time. So again, that decision has not been made. It will be going back to council in the fall. And that will be a full public hearing in front of council. And they will be seeking your input on that proposal. Next question is, is there a development going on at the former bar close to Central and Middlefield? It's been vacant for a number of years. To best of my knowledge, we don't have a proposal on that, on that site at this time.
Wisman and Middlefield, right? Not Central and Middlefield? Wisman and Middlefield, you talking about the, talking about the wagon wheel?
No, this is an old bar that's actually on Moffett Boulevard.
That, okay. How about the wagon wheel?
So the next question is, concerns about someone parking, parking in front of my home. Townhouse Development next to my home has no guest parking. And guests at the complex park in front of the writer's home. Is it legal? Is it moral? I'm not going to touch the latter part. If you saw my grade in moral philosophy in college, you would understand why. Is it legal? Max will correct me on this. If it's a public street, it is legal for a person to park in front of another person's home. There are limitations on how long they can park, I think seventy-two hours. But typically, most, what did catch my eye is a project that doesn't have guest parking and has put up a sign that says, "Really, parking only." So that is one thing we can check on. Most projects do have guest parking. And perhaps in this case, they post a sign that may not have, may not supposed to be there. So that is something we can check on. And who does the architectural review in Mountain View? Person's expressing a lot of concerns about the design of the San Antonio Center project. And we do have a designer reviewer, development review committee that we have two architectural advisors on that committee. They make a recommendation to, depending on what the process is and who's reviewing it, either to staff, towards the staff and planning commission, and ultimately, city council. This actually ties in well to our upcoming website upgrade. One of the things we want to be able to do through our website, website upgrade, is dedicate certain pages to key high-visibility projects like the San Antonio Center project and others that come through the city. We know that there's a lot of interest on the part of the residents. We're looking for an easier way to post those drawings so you can get a good idea of what's being submitted to us. And you can actually see what's being proposed. And that will allow you to comment much more easily on the project and specifically on what it looks like. So through this website upgrade, we'll be able to do that. And what we will be encouraging you to do is take a look at those drawings, provide your commentary on the design, the architectural design, the character of that project. And that can feed into our public hearing process. And certainly, your comments are comments that the planning commission and staff and the city council will take very seriously. And last card is the, inquiring about the vision for the East Wisman Change Area. So just clarify, the East Wisman Change Area is an area of Mountain View that begins at Wisman, goes towards the east to the Mountain View-Sunnyvale city limits, is south of 101, and more or less stops at Middlefield Road. So that gives you a little snapshot. It's primarily the office, the office area. So it's an area that in the general plan has allowed additional growth, additional building area in that area. You're probably aware of some development proposals that are going through the process. Currently, we alluded to one by Reeve, that's on the east side of 237. The general plan does allow for additional building area to continue with the economic vitality of Mountain View. General plan also is looking for ways to encourage more diversity in the types of land uses in that area. As we begin, eventually, look at the zoning that will implement that general plan. Will, one of the questions we'll be posing to the EPC, Environmental Planning Commission, and ultimately, the council is, are there zoning incentives that can be put into place to encourage more retail and services in the area? There's also strong language in the plan about providing more connections through those large blocks that occur in that East Wisman area. Breaking down those blocks, allowing more pedestrian and cycling connections through the area and creating much stronger connections both to the Middlefield Light Rail Station and to the Moffett Station. Public Works does have a feasibility study right now on how we can get, how we can improve that access to the Moffett Light Rail Station.
Hi, two questions. What do we need to do to start residential composting with weekly trash pickup? And the other is about recycling these or scavenging. So we did an analysis last year and the year before looking into allowing residents to put food scraps in the yard trimmings carts. And that analysis showed us that the, basically, the cost benefit to doing that was pretty low. In other words, high cost to process that material and low, not a lot of additional diversion as a result. There's two reasons for that. One is that when you put food in with yard trimmings, we have to pay two to three times more to have all that material composted because it's a whole different process. So for the little bit of food you put in, we have to then pay more for all those yard trimmings that we used to be composting at a lower rate. And the reason that we weren't anticipating a huge amount of additional diversion from that is because all of your trash right now is processed at a facility in Sunnyvale. And as that, we process it to remove recyclables from the trash before it goes to the landfill. And in that process, we recover a lot of compostable food waste that we compost now. So putting it in your yard trimming cart was not going to give us an additional, a large additional up and diversion. So what we have decided to do is to do a pilot in 2014 to see if we can come up with a method to collect food scraps from you that have not been put in the yard trimmings. And we have a couple of ideas about how we might do that. And we'll be choosing a neighborhood this fall to roll that out in early 2014 to see if we can come up with a more cost-effective way to do that. We're also looking at ways to increase the efficiency of the food that we recover during the trash sorting process at the smart station. during the trash sorting process at the smart station. And we might in fact decide that that is a more low-cost and efficient way for us to do that. So, we, we may not ask you to put your food in with your yard trimmings in the foreseeable future. The other question is about what to do about recycling thieves. This affects a problem, doesn't have an easy solution. The, probably the most effective thing you can do, if it's possible, is for you to put your carts out in the morning by 7:00 a.m. That reduces the time that scavengers have to get into your carts. Most of them come around at night. The other thing that you can do is to, if you see persistent scavenging, to try and note what time they come, what they look like. If they're in a vehicle, get some information and call the non-emergency police number, which should be on your, your sheets there. If they don't have other calls at the moment that have higher priority, they will come out. We have cited scavengers in the past. We ask that you don't approach them, but please do call the non-emergency number and give as much information as you possibly can. Thank you.
Here are a couple of questions about the city-owned piece of property near Moffett 101. The city did buy a piece of property from the county several years ago. Question about, did it test high for TCE, which is the chemical discussed earlier? It hasn't been treated. What are the plans for the land? And have we done a traffic impact study based on any plans? We're currently doing some environmental review of the property. I don't have the test results available yet. As far as the plans for the land, we will be returning to the city council to discuss that very topic probably in the fall. So, keep your eye on the council agenda for that. And we have not done any traffic studies yet. I think we need to narrow down the, the possible uses before we do that. So, there will be some discussion about that property later this year and stay tuned if you're interested.
Okay, what we're going to do, so we're going to take Captain Bozell's question and a few more and then we're going to shut it off. But it will be, your questions will still be answered in a written report because we're, we're running out of time. So.
Thank you, council member. Question about drones. The federal government gave permission for police departments to use drones. To what extent, whether are they being used now at this time? So, we don't use drones in the Mountain View Police Department. I know of some case studies in which agencies in the United States have used them for various pilot projects, but, and there's articles in the industry that you are starting to see as well as some vendors that are promoting them, but there's no discussions at the Mountain View Police Department about incorporating that technology.
What's the threshold number of resident participation to stimulate a traffic study in our installation of speed bumps on Easy Street? So, origin, the initiation is just 10, 20% of residents submitting, submitting a petition. And then after it qualifies, we will send a postcard survey. And what we are asking is two-thirds majority of people who respond to the survey. So, not everybody. If they don't respond, we don't count them. Can someone adjust the traffic light on Middlefield and 237? It's difficult to tell if the signal light is green or red. That's a Caltrans state traffic signal. They have installed kind of a program visibility, but the two signals are so close to each other that you can't see the second signal. The issue is if you're stopped in a signal and you pay attention and the other signal is too close and that turns green, some cars just start running the red light. So, it's intentional, but we will look and see if it could be adjusted better with Caltrans. And then last, I have a comment. Yerba Linda and Southern California built in above great over crossing approximately 10 years ago in a lower speed freight and commuter train crossing at Yerba Linda Boulevard and Espanza Boulevard. That's a comment.
So, the question is, can you give us an update on the toxic waste issues in our area? I just wanted some clarification if there was a particular site or the ground, just the general groundwater plume in the area?
I can give a little update on the MAW groundwater plume. We've removed, Pump and Treat has been operating there for about 20 years. We've removed over 100,000 pounds of VOCs and treated about 5 billion gallons of groundwater. We're now moving from using the pump and treat system to using alternative technologies to treat the groundwater to hopefully accelerate the cleanup. It took a long time for the contamination to get into the ground, so it's taking a long time to remove it. We're actively doing that work. We're also sampling, we have sampled a number of the commercial buildings and residences over the plume and putting in mitigation systems where necessary.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you for coming tonight. So, that concludes this portion of the meeting. If you had other questions in that didn't get answered, they will be in the written report, so make sure you have your name on there. So, what we're going to do now is I'm going to allow or ask my fellow council members to make any comments that they would like. And then we're going to open it up to questions by your hand raising for us, Mormons. So, council member Magalaster, you want to go first?
Yeah, I just want, first of all, before we can't see you any longer, I want to thank you for all coming out here. This is the type of input that I really appreciate the rest of the council, where we actually hear one-on-one what your concerns are, how it affects your neighborhood, how it affects your quality of life. So, I appreciate it. I know the rest of, and this is great for communication. One-on-one is always good. Now, there was also comment that I want you to, I want, some responsibility that you need to take with you, is that even though it's a project that happens in your neighborhood or it doesn't happen in your neighborhood, give input because you never know, it could happen in your neighborhood. And by not ignoring, by ignoring it and saying it's down the road, you are sort of setting a precedent so that when it comes to your neighborhood, oh, it's been approved before. So, anything that you see developing in Mountain View, we're going through a huge amount of development right now. Speed up. Somebody's asking about the, the mixed use. Why isn't there any mixed use going on? Speed up on that part. The HOAs, I thought we were talking about parking. Make sure that that, that complex has a homeowners association that enforces the rules. We have some new projects coming through right now that we're specifically looking to say, enforce the rules or we're going to come back or we're going to say no to the rest of the future. So, look at those items to get going and, and push it and say, ask the policeman if they've said, "Well, that's not our responsibility." Then find out who it is, who's in charge of the homeowners association and they should enforce that. But again, I thank you for coming. You know, we're going to have torchlight lately here that are on, but it's, it's, now we get a fun part because when you're going to ask some questions, we get some dialogue. But it's again, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate also my thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. It's a great, safe little house here and this is always a great opportunity for us to hear from all of you. As was mentioned earlier from Dan, we are working on improving our website and I've been on our council technology committee for almost the whole time I've been on council. And we're always looking for ways to communicate, to get information out to the community and also hear from all of you. So, please look forward to our new website. We've got a preview and it is, it's looking much nicer. There's Ask Mountain View. You know, if you ever have a question, please use that and staff, that's a way for our staff to track all of the inquiries and make sure that we get responses to everybody in a timely manner. Twitter, I'm Holly, I'm on Twitter and on Facebook. It's always a great way to see what's going on, to hear from all of you as well. So, thank you again for coming out and.
So, this is a time of night where we usually start losing people. So, before you leave, I would like to thank our staff for coming out tonight and I'd like to, I'd like to thank our council members for coming. Just for those of you that don't know, what, a lot of you think we do, we go to council meetings on Tuesday night. We cover approximately 31 committees, commissions throughout the Bay Area that we all serve. We, we have different ones, we split them up. So, we're out many, many, many nights a week, but you're not. So, we really appreciate you coming out tonight. It's very important to us. And above all, get involved in the city. It's your city. Give, give input to the council. Let us know what you're thinking, what you like, what you don't like. To my knowledge, this is one of the very few cities that does an outreach like this. Sunnyvale, Palo Alto, none of them do this. And, and we think it's good. We've been doing it for a number of years. So, again, thank you for coming out. And with that, we're going to open it up for some questions. The only, and I don't mind dialoguing a little bit, but we don't want to let one person use the rest of the approximately 15 minutes we have here. So, if you have a question, state the question, I'll repeat the question and then we'll try to answer it. Yes?
We were talking about the architectural review for commercial projects. Yet there's no architectural review on residential projects. There's only recommendations that are not enforced at all on new construction for residential.
Okay.
And there's three houses built in our neighborhood that are so hideous, don't follow any of the recommendations at all, but they fit the footprint that you're allowed to build.
Okay, so the question is, we have, we have architectural review for buildings, commercial buildings, but for individual houses and residential, there doesn't appear to be much. So, Randy, you want to hit that one?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is correct. If there is an individual home being built under the way our current zoning code is structured, there is no required architectural review. Some other communities require that every home go through an architectural review process. That's not something that has ever been implemented here in Mountain View. So, that, that's something that these communities are interested in, the residents are interested in that some feedback that would need to be considered by the city council.
Thank you. Next question. Don't have to ask them, but if you'd like to.
What's going to happen with the former wagon wheel property? Been vacant for years.
We can give you a little bit of feedback on that. I don't know of the current, but I know of one time it was sold and it was Habitat for Humanity. There have been a number of uses that have been proposed and each time they kind of fall through. It's been, as you indicate, it's been for years now. Of course, the first thing people do is come in and it's demolishing, right? Which many people were not happy about. Is there a current proposal? There is no current proposal on that piece of property. And again, we don't propose things to be built in the city. The developers do. We take them into consideration and either we say yay or nay or no, we don't like this part, we like this part, could you change this, could you change that? But we don't instigate the developer. So, yes, back here.
This is kind of addressed to the city council. There was some discussion tonight about the traffic and the congestion at Central and Moffett. They're proposing pretty 200 apartments there that can increase the number of pedestrians. They want to make it the beginning of a cycle track. And you can hear that there's already problems with what's there. I hope that they will reconsider that development area. It's just seems like it's a, it's a bad plan. I don't know how many of the city council members actually are in that area. If you're there between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, it's a nightmare. So, you're going to add more cars, more people, more bikes.
Okay, the question is about the development at the intersection of Central and Moffett, where it's proposed to put another 190 units. And the council recently voted to close the on-ramp there and to basically sell that property to the developer so they could do it. What's, what's behind a lot of it is that that is a very close, in very close proximity to the train station. The vision is that as time goes on, more and more people will be using public transportation such as trains and/or buses and/or whatever. And it's an area that's very close. And yes, there are traffic issues. So, what was proposed there is to put a right turn lane at that intersection. There is not presently a right turn lane only there. And in looking at it, I think that it, it might be better, it might not be better. It, it's not going to go away. I don't think anyone thinks it's going to go away. So, what's driving it though, again, is the housing, the need for housing close to public transportation. Did you, anybody else want to comment on that? Anyway, that's what's behind it. If you want some discussions offline after the meeting, I'll be happy to talk to you some more about it. But your, your question is a good one. Thank you. Yes, Greg?
Along the same lines, in the North Bay Shore Transit Study, one idea that was floated was some sort of bus area on the other side of Central from the train station and some sort of maybe crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk over Central Expressway. Is that being actively considered?
Not to my knowledge. Is that being looked at right now, Mike?
That was one of the ideas in the transportation study. And the city council funded the Shoreline Corridor Study that has three pieces. Starting at the north, we're going to look at a feasibility of a dedicated bus, bike, pit, bridge or Highway 101. We're going to look at possibly dedicated lanes for bikes and transit from the North Bay Shore, select Shoreline and 101 down to the downtown transit center. And then the third part, which is I think what you're, you're addressing, is what improvements can be made at the downtown transit center. We're using that as an important, important way to bring people into Mountain View without being in their vehicles, but then we need to get them from the center to the areas of deployment. That is one of the areas that was discussed and that's probably one of the things that we'll, we'll evaluate as part of that study. That'll be happening this fiscal year. So, again, keep your eye out for that if you want to follow that. We will have some public meetings.
Thank you. Yes?
Any thought of trying to offload some of the traffic on the Mountain View train station in San Antonio by pumping up facilities there, light buses and things like that?
Margaret, do you know anything about that? No, no current plans. Don't think so. The question was, is there any plans to beef up the San Antonio area where the train comes through and more buses and so on? And right now, I don't think there's any current plans looking at that. Is there? It's Caltrans, yeah. Yeah, we, we don't know, so we, we have to. So, let me, let me ask a question. Anybody know about the animal ordinance? Has you heard, heard anything about the animal ordinance? Might as well hit it dead on, so.
The what?
So, so let me just give you a quick rundown about that. There was a, we've been working on a new animal ordinance with the city of Mountain View because it's very old. And we now are part of the Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority. We are no longer with the city of Palo Alto for our animal control. And so, we've been with them now for a year, a little over a year. And one of the things that happened in updating the ordinance, we tried to use basically what Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority uses for their ordinance. We're trying to make them with all the other cities as similar as we can. Well, in it, the cat, you even know about the cats? So, let me tell you what happened with the cats. The Humane Society is the, was the reference that recommended rabies shots for cats and also for licensing of cats. And it was in the ordinance. So, when many people heard about it, it was quite an outcry. So, again, it worked. You said, "No, we don't want this." It wasn't done maliciously. It wasn't done trying to sneak anything through. It was just basically going along with the ordinance of the Humane Society. So, we have since now put that off and we will look at it again in the fall after more study, more questions are answered and then you have more time to input that. So, okay, any other questions? We have a few more minutes left. The very back.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, with the high-speed railroad project, is there going to be a proposal to do a complete grade separation at Castro and San Jose so that the traffic lights, you know, won't place the seat for five minutes and that way the businesses in downtown won't lose lunch business because of that?
So, the question is about the high-speed rail and crossing at Castro Street, I believe is what you're indicating, what kind of plans and so on. And the answer is it's in the future. We don't know. We really don't know. There have been some proposals. There have been some proposals. They were rejected by many cities along the peninsula. And right now, everyone's sort of concentrating on electrification. And electrification will mean a few more trains an hour, which could be more holdup. But along with that, the better signalization and the better technology to raise and lower the traffic crossing guards may improve things because the trains will actually go faster. They will accelerate faster and stop faster. So they may not have, the downtimes may not be as long. All this is being studied, so I wish we could give you better real answers, but we can't at this time. They're just not there. Any more? Yes, one more.
Middlefield and Moffett with a temporary light rating was some of the, you know, private trains back from.
Yeah, that's on federal property. It's within the city of Mountain View, but it's federal property. We have no jurisdiction over it. So, okay. Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming. You stayed longer than I had thought you might. This is your city. Get involved with it. Give us your input. It means a lot. And again, thanks for everyone for coming.